My privilege over the course of this past summer and into the fall to work with the team members who have been working on the draft use agreement. The...tonight's meeting has been set up in order for us to gain, the team to gain input from the public about the proposed use agreement. And in a few minutes Jeff Badenoch from the Missoula Redevelopment Agency is going to go through the entire agreement in its, what, fourth, fifth draft as it stands right now. And it would be important for you to know that as this agreement stands right now, it's still being discussed among team members. Nothing is cast in stone. And most importantly, we're only, the team is only an advisory body. Ultimately, the city council can take some or all or reject it all. I would like the team members, if they would now, to just introduce themselves so you know who's sitting up here. Mary Ann?
Mary Ann Mancini, Riverfront Neighborhood Council.
Mary Ann Mancini, Riverfront Neighborhood Council.
I'm Dave Harmon. I'm a city council person in Ward One.
Ed Corno, Chair of Parks and Rec Board.
I'm Gerald Mueller. I'm Playball's representative.
Joe Easton, and I'm representing the Missoula Osprey.
Jeff Stevens, representing the community forum.
Tracy Turek, Ward Six.
And I saw, I saw, there, okay, got him. I'm gonna ask Jeff now to do a presentation concerning the use agreement and allow him to get entirely through it. He has it as a PowerPoint presentation. And once Jeff has completed that process, it'll probably take him about fifteen minutes or maybe a little longer, then we're going to open the floor for questions and comments. And I'll have a little more say to you after Jeff has completed this part of the presentation.
I've been asked by the MCAT technicians later on tonight when we ask for comments, if you would speak into the microphone so they can get your audio signal as well as the video signal. We're gonna be asking for comments at the conclusion of my presentation of the draft agreement. And then we'll ask your comments and we'll write them down as we get them. I've also been asked to explain that this is a document which is the use agreement, which is principally focused on how the facility will be used and kinda laying out the ground rules for how it will be used. There is another agreement that is currently also being drafted called a development agreement. And a development agreement covers things like, this would help if I turned it on. Yeah, just put it down. The development agreement covers things like how wide access roads will be, public improvements that go along with the develop, with the development of the proposed Civic Stadium, and issues like that. There may be questions that you have tonight that have occurred to you that are probably or that may be answered in the development agreement and not in this agreement. To the best of my ability later, when we, when we hear your comments, I will try to tell you whether or not that already is in the development agreement and not in the use agreement. This will take just a few minutes to fire up. The use agreement that you picked up, if you picked one up to look at it, is marked liberally on the front with the word "draft" because this is a work in progress. And the team itself, as Art said, is not done with it. Part of our reason for the meeting tonight is to get your comments to feed back to the team so they can review what your input is and consider your input and determine whether or not the team wants to put those comments or incorporate those comments into the use agreement, which then will be forwarded on to the city council.
Oh, sorry, I can delay. Is this the same one that you passed out a couple of days ago?
This is the same agreement. We haven't changed it. It's the same one.
Okay, this is just what I just mentioned before. Earlier this year, the Missoula City Council passed a resolution to consider the possibility of using McCormick Park as a site for the Missoula Osprey Professional Minor League Baseball Team. Two city council members, two representatives from the nearby neighborhood council, two members who play ball in Missoula, along with representatives of the park board and the neighborhood community forum, have been meeting several months to consider this issue.
Part of the first thing that, that the group or the team determined was that McCormick Park was not the place to put the ballpark. And so consequently, we ended up back over on the Champion Site. The purpose of the use agreement is to explain the relationship between the city and Playball in Missoula, to memorialize the duties and obligations of the parties, and to say how the Civic Stadium will be used. Again, this is not how it will be built, but rather how it will be used. As I mentioned, there is a Civic Stadium Development Agreement. There is a Facility Lease Agreement, which is a document that gives Playball occupancy into the facility. And there is a Manual of Policies, which you will see referred to in this document. When we get down to that a little bit further, what that is will become more clear. This agreement has all the contractual features of any agreement. It identifies the parties. It has what are called recitals, which is the wheresses. And it has, for the ease of understanding of the document, the issues are broken out by sections. And you can refer to them by their topical section name. The first item in the agreement, the first section, I am not gonna go over the recitals because I don't think that those are really the meat of what we're here for. The first item is the location. This gives basically the legal placement of the facility. It includes the land that is to be given to the city by Champion International. This is the legal description of the location. The next item is the ownership of the facility. Concurrent with the execution of this agreement, Playball agrees to construct the stadium in accordance with the provisions of this agreement, and upon completion of the construction shall convey to the city, and the city shall accept, all right time and interest in and to the facility located at the Champion Site. Playball agrees that the title to the facility shall be free of all liens at the time of transfer. In other words, Playball will build this and it will be given to the city of Missoula. So the city of Missoula will be the owner. The lease of the facility. Upon execution of the agreement, the city and Playball shall enter into a professional baseball park lease agreement for a term of ten years, which shall be renewable for two successive five-year terms upon the giving of ninety days' notice by Playball of intention to renew. The option to renew may not be abridged so long as Playball is compliant with the terms and conditions of its lease. Further terms and conditions relating to the lease agreement and its renewal or termination shall be contained in the professional baseball park lease agreement, the copy of which is attached here to as Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by this reference. We don't have that. Okay? The lease agreement, we haven't got to that yet. But it will be incorporated so that at the time that the, the use agreement is executed, we will also know what the terms of the lease agreement are. Operation of the facility. Playball shall have control over the management and operation of the facility as provided by this agreement, including the use of the facility for minor league professional baseball. Playball shall, in consultation with the Riverfront Neighborhood Council, establish a manual of policies regarding the use and operation of the facility for review and approval by the city. Such approval shall not be unreasonably withheld. The manual of policies shall be submitted to the city council no later than May one, year 2000. Thereafter, the manual of policies shall be annually reviewed and revised as needed by the city council no later than March one, following public notice and notification of the leadership team of the affected neighborhood councils, no later than the preceding January fifteen. If the city council fails to review and revise the manual of policies by that date, Playball shall be allowed to operate the facility under the terms of the then existing manual of policies. What this is, is the hierarchy of documents that we're trying to create is the use agreement, which tells what's gonna happen, the lease agreement, which describes the terms, and the manual of policies, which is a, is a more organic document, something that will be amendable as we learn how this facility fits into the community, as we learn what works and doesn't work. The manual of policies will be reviewed by the county, city council every year to incorporate changes that need to be changed and how the policies governing the facility need to be Application of laws. Playball shall comply with all applicable laws, rules, regulations, and ordinances of every governmental body or agency whose authority extends to the property or to any business conducted upon the property, including but not limited to rules, regulations, and policy relating to the use by the public and Playball. Further, Playball adopts the statement of nondiscrimination used by the city and attached hereto as Exhibit B. That exhibit of the state, city's policy of affirmative action is not included, but that's a, that's a statement that is included in each and every contract that the city of Missoula enters into with anybody, whether it's somebody building a road for us, somebody selling us a computer, whatever contract the city of Missoula has, it requires by law that the city's statement of affirmative action be included in there. Essentially, what that says is that hiring, employment practices, and so on shall not Item six, alcohol. Playball and the city agree that the use of alcohol in the facility shall be in accordance with the state and federal laws and the policies of Major League Baseball and Professional Baseball Agreement. Playball is given specific permission to remit sale and consumption of beer and table wine. Table wine was a term that was put in the agreement. Frankly, I'm not sure of what other kind of wine they anticipated, but table wine during minor league professional baseball games subject to the following limitations. A, no beer or wine is to be sold after the seventh inning. B, no more than two servings of beer or wine may be sold to one person at one time. C, beer and wine may be served or sold to special groups as designated by Playball for a period of up to one hour before the start of a minor league professional baseball game. D, alcohol consumption at tailgate parties in the stadium parking lot will be permitted provided all alcohol consumption ends when the baseball game starts. Any specific requirements regarding the use of alcohol at the facility, including the requirement that only licensed caterers be allowed to serve alcohol, shall be included in the manual of policies governing the facility. In other words, if you were going to have a wedding there, unless you're using a caterer who's licensed to serve alcohol, it wouldn't be permitted for you to serve alcohol there. Auxiliary use of the facility. The city acknowledges that Playball's security portion of its financing for the facility through private debt, which Playball intends to repay from revenue derived from subletting the facility for purposes other than minor league professional baseball. It is understood and agreed that the facility shall be used and occupied by Playball and persons and entities who rent the facility from Playball, with cultural, social, and political events consistent with the use of a city park. No liens may be filed against publicly owned city property. Playball covenants of no liens will attach to the facility as a result of Playball's operations in the public facility, and Playball will wholeheartedly defend and indemnify the city of Missoula against any asserted claims or liens. The parties here too recognize that permitted and prohibited use of the facility will be determined over time based on experience. Any use which is prohibited or restricted either by its nature, potential damage to the facility, or undue disruption to the neighborhood shall be listed in the manual of policies provided for Section Four, Operation of the Facility, above. The business about liens, does everybody understand what, what we're talking about, about liens? If you, if you, for example, hire somebody to work on your house and you don't pay them, they can file a lien against your, your property, against your paying them. In other words, it attaches a restriction to your ability to sell your property or, or otherwise until you get that lien issued resolved. You can't file a lien against public property. But it's just a matter of notice to Playball that you cannot allow a lien to be filed against public property. So they have to be on notice for that. Management fee. The city shall not be required to pay Playball any fee for management of the facility. Consideration to Playball will be the ability to manage events in the facility and charge rental on the facility as set out below. In other words, the city isn't gonna have to pay Playball to manage or operate or take care of the facility. Facility rental. Section nine. Playball shall be entitled to rent the facility or portions thereof to persons and entities for cultural, social, and political events consistent with the use of a city park. Playball shall be responsible for all costs and expenses associated with such rentals. Playball shall be entitled to set rental rates for use of the facility or specific portions of the facility, and retain all rents paid for such use for operation, management, and maintenance of the facility. In other words, Playball has all the costs. Playball gets all the revenue. Facility operation, maintenance, and repair. Playball agrees to maintain the facility in good, clean, and safe condition at its sole expense, including payment of all personnel salaries and benefits of those employed by Playball for maintenance purposes, utilities, including gas, water, electricity, telephony, sewer, maintenance insurance, professional fees and costs, advertising, garbage collection service, all normal routine and necessary costs of operation, and any applicable taxes and assessments. Maintenance shall include repairs to the roofs, structure, and building systems of the facility, as well as the ball field, clubhouse, locker rooms, concession stands, restrooms, offices, light, public address system, fences, irrigation system, bleachers, box seats, facility parking areas, and common area. Nothing in this provision shall require or preclude Playball from contracting with the city or its departments for maintenance services at the facility. In other words, the blanket is Playball, these are all the things that you have to pay for. That last section, nothing in the provision shall require or preclude Playball from contracting with the city or its departments for maintenance. In other words, if Playball wanted to hire the Parks Department and pay them on a contract basis to mow the infield or the outfield, they could do that. But likewise, they're not required to hire the Parks Department to maintain it. They can, but they aren't required to. Noise ordinance. Playball acknowledges the city has adopted a noise ordinance that prohibits excessive noise within the city. Playball agrees to specifically include compliance with the city's noise ordinance in its agreements to rent the facility. The city recognizes that minor league professional baseball games may, from time to time, continue past the times when certain levels of noise are permitted, and that such occasions are specifically exempted, permitted relief from noise level as provided in Section 9.30.070 of the municipal, Missoula Municipal Code. This provision notwithstanding, Playball will endeavor to minimize the use of all amplified sound during minor league professional baseball games, which continue after permitted hours so that the intent of the municipal noise ordinance is observed. This recognizes that on occasion, if you get an eleven inning game, a thirteen inning game, that you may go past ten o'clock on a weeknight. And you can't anticipate that happening. You don't know when it will. And so this is a blanket exemption for baseball only because we recognize that from time to time, the games may go longer than the noise ordinance permits. But they, Playball will try to keep it down after those hours. They're, they're gonna, that's what we're gonna ask them to agree to. No event may use sound amplification equipment other than the facility's sound system without the express written permission of the Civic Stadium Extraordinary Events Committee as provided in Section thirteen, Events, below. Use of lights other than those installed as a permanent part of the facility will be subject to the approval of the Extraordinary Events Committee. Lighting of the facility parking area shall be in conformance with city ordinances governing such issues. In other words, we've got lights to light the ball field. Anything other than that's gotta go and be reviewed by the events committee. So I'm trying to think of an example of why anybody would have more lights or bigger lights. I can't think of one, but if they do, that would have to be subject to review before, before it could be done. The lighting of the parking lot, parking lots, because of their, their vast flatness, if they're not lit, can be very, give rise to feelings of not being safe. And so when we have parking lots in the city, we require, do we not, you don't require lighting parking lots? Most people light their parking lots because of the liability of not having them lit. I'm looking at Steve King here, our city engineer. Events. The parties here too acknowledge that the facility is a community facility and will be used by the community for a variety of purposes in addition to the intended use of minor league professional baseball. Further, the parties agree that the facility will be suitable for some events and not others. Unsuitable events are those which endanger the public, exceed the facility's ability to support public use during the event, or unduly jeopardize the facility. Unsuitable events will not be permitted in the facility. Extraordinary events are events which by their nature require observance of specific provisions to protect the interests of the community as well as those of the affected neighborhood. The parties acknowledge that it is impossible to catalog each and every potential extraordinary event, and therefore the parties agree that events with the following characteristics, alone or combined in any fashion, will be extraordinary events. Events with potential expected or planned attendance at any one time of more than... And we did have a number here. I didn't remember it, but I was reminded today, of one thousand people. One thousand persons. Events that require more parking than that provided on a two point five acre site directly south of the facility. We haven't got that facility, the, the parking area completely designed yet. The numbers that we're looking at range between two hundred and two hundred and fifty cars. It may be more, it may be less. We don't know yet because there's some obstacles there. There's a mountain water well. There's some other stuff down there that may have to stay. And so we don't get the luxury at this point of having a, you know, very even polygon to divide up into parking spaces. There's some obstacles there, and that, that has not been designed yet. Events that run for more than six consecutive hours, or the same event occurs for more than two consecutive days. Events that require sound amplification in addition to the sound system incorporated, incorporated into the facility. Events that require the city council to grant a specific variance from the city of Missoula noise ordinance in order to legally occur. Events such as rodeos, circuses, livestock shows, et cetera, involve large animals such as horses, cattle, shepherds, similar large animals. Extraordinary events shall be, and each extraordinary event shall be reviewed by a Civic Stadium Extraordinary Events Committee comprised of following members. One representative of Playball in Missoula. The director of the Missoula Parks Recreation and Urban Forestry Department. The city council conservation committee chair, or the chairs designee. One representative from the community forum. One representative from each of the neighborhood councils of the three neighborhoods adjoining the facility. And those representatives will be selected by each affected neighborhood council. One member of the parks board and the manager of the facility. This committee will be determined, will determine the measures necessary to mitigate the undesirable impacts of extraordinary events or to, or to determine whether such events should occur at all. Parking and traffic control. In order to mitigate and control the impacts of parking, traffic generated by the facility and the neighborhood and other public facilities, the parties agree with the following multi-car Hickory Street will be closed north of the intersection of River Street during all minor league professional baseball games and extraordinary events. Until the event is over and the people have all left, then will, the street will be opened up again. Shuttle buses and other alternatives to single occupants of vehicles will be explored and encouraged by Playball and its lessees during extraordinary events. Playball and its lessees will be responsible for street closures and parking and traffic control during extraordinary events. Each event, including minor league professional baseball games, shall provide the necessary parking and traffic control in the form of barricades, signs, and trained traffic controllers. Persons or groups renting the facility shall agree to specific requirements for parking and traffic control in writing as a condition for using the facility. Playball shall obtain written use agreements with owners of public and private lots in the area to provide, blank, available parking spaces during minor league professional baseball games and extraordinary events, augment the anticipated two hundred, two hundred and fifty spaces to be located on the approximate two point five acres to the south of the Civic Stadium. When I'm done and later on this, this evening, if you wanna come up and look at this map, this map on the easel right there is a map that is based on aerial photographs of the area around the proposed baseball park facility. And it includes all the parking spaces that we could count that are not in front of people's homes. So we didn't go into the residential neighborhood. We did the industrial streets. We looked at parking lots in and around the area. We specifically did not include McCormick Park. The McCormick Park area will be signed not for baseball use. And there, there's some other things that we also have that are not part of this agreement that I can't speak to right now. All off-site parking spaces identified by Playball, either through the use agreement or not in front of the residential property, will be depicted on a map which Playball will distribute to publicize through local newspapers. In other words, we'll map it and we'll tell people where the parking is available. In order to preserve parking for users of McCormick Park, the city will place signage at the entrance of two McCormick Park parking lot, limiting use to McCormick Park users only. At such times parking facilities are created at the former Hart Refinery Site, the city will provide motor vehicle connections to the city's street network in such a manner as to disperse in multiple directions the motor vehicle traffic coming to from the lot. This is the lot that is just north of the Ram Activity Center that used to have a refinery on it, and there's a plan now to cap it. The reason more progress has not been made on dealing with that particular parking lot or that project is that the Roman Catholic Diocese has not had a bishop until very recently. He's just come on board. And all title to Catholic lands is vested in the bishop of the diocese. And so if there's any agreements that have to be made with respect to buying, selling, leasing, using church land, the bishop has to sign off on it. In the absence of a bishop, nothing could be signed off on. But now that, that process is starting to gear up. He's very, very busy, obviously, and this is not the first thing on his list. Traffic calming. The city will test ways to calm traffic generated by the facility at the intersections of Hickory and First Street, Hickory and Second Street, Coswood and First Street, Cottonwood and Second Street. If the traffic calming tests indicate the desirability and/or need for permanent traffic calming improvements, the city will pursue funding, including but not limited to tax income and financing, to share the cost of the improvements with the affected neighborhood property owners. Save it, and we'll write it when you can tell it later. Park and ride. The parties recognize the significant public and private investment in the parking lot of the Civic Stadium. Further, the parties recognize the need for parking or other than parking during baseball games and auxiliary events. Therefore, the city and Playball reserve the right to use the parking lot of the Civic Stadium for other purposes except during periods when events are held. Such use and terms therefore shall be memorialized and approved by Playball and the city. Signs and advertising. Parties acknowledge that advertising signs are a part of the anticipated revenue of Playball and minor league professional baseball. Nothing in this agreement shall preclude placement of advertising within the confines of the facility. The parties agree the permanent scoreboard, the exterior surface of which facing within the facility, may be visible from some points outside the facility, may be visible from some points outside the facility at all times. Facility name. The city recognizes that Playball desires to offer naming rights for the facility and its component parts as a capital fundraising mechanism, and agrees that the city shall take ownership of the facility with a name assigned to it by Playball. Playball agrees the name shall not include words that are discriminatory, derogatory, or offensive. City use of the facility. The city and Playball agree the facility shall be available in no charge for city-sponsored events a total of six times during the course of the calendar year. On three occasions during the course of the professional minor league baseball season, with such use will not interfere with minor league baseball uses. And on three occasions during the balance of the year. If any occasion constitutes an extraordinary event, the city will contribute to the costs associated with the customary extraordinary event expenses, such as parking and traffic control, et cetera. Right to enter. City officials may enter the facility at any such reasonable time to conduct inspections of the condition of the facility to ascertain that cleaning and maintenance are being performed in a satisfactory manner. Personal property and liability risk. Playball agrees to maintain and effect a personal property and liability insurance policy in amounts of at least one million five hundred thousand dollars, and which names the city as an additional insured. To assure the carrying out of the public purposes of the facility in the mutual coordination of efforts of the parties, the mayor of the city of Missoula, or his designee, shall serve on the board of the directors of Playball during the term of this agreement. Business records. Playball agrees that it shall keep and provide to the city a full and complete accounting of all incoming expenses of the operation of the facility, and that its accounting records shall be open to the city upon request. Twenty-three is notice. This is how you write, send people notices to the mayor and to Playball. Default. If Playball violates or fails to abide by the provisions of the agreement, and fails to take immediate corrective action within thirty days, written notice of a violation will be called. Playball will, shall be deemed, I'm sorry, I've got will and shall in there, shall be deemed to have forfeited its privileges and management rights with respect to operation of the facility. Please note, that should be shall and not will. That was the city attorney's word. Remedies. Upon default, the city may take possession of the facility. If any default occurs, Playball shall be responsible for any and all bills, expenses, and costs incurred with respect to the operation of the facility up to the date the city's taken possession. Surrender of premises. At the conclusion of any lease period for which there is no renewal, Playball agrees to leave the premises of the facility in good or bad condition, and will surrender all keys, maintenance manuals, as do drawings, whether modified or not, to the city. Further, Playball will remove all items of personal property, whether owned by Playball, its tenants, or lessees, unless specifically authorized by the city in writing to do otherwise. Quiet possession. Playball shall be entitled to quiet possession of the user of the facility as herein described, so long as the terms of this agreement and other, any other agreements between the parties are complied with. Termination and modification by mutual consent. The parties may consider termination and any modification of or amendments to this agreement at any time, if such termination, modification, or amendment may only be in writing signed by the party. Complete agreement. This agreement, including any exhibits and attachment heretofore, embodies entire agreement and understanding of the parties with respect to the subject matter. There are no restrictions, promises, representations, warranties, covenants, or undertakings other than those expressed and set forth or referred to in this agreement. Both parties shall be prohibited from offering into evidence in any arbitration or civil action any terms, conditions, understandings, warranties, statements, or representations, whether oral or written, that are not contained in this agreement. No party will be bound by any terms, conditions, understandings, warranties, statements, or representations, whether oral or written, that are not contained in this agreement. Separability. If any provision of this agreement is declared void or held invalid, such provision will be deemed severed from this agreement, and the remaining provisions of this agreement will otherwise remain in full force and effect. Relationship with the parties. The parties here two are not, shall not be regarded as partners or joint ventureurs, and neither party shall as a result of this agreement be held to answer for any loss, charge, or expense in connection with or arising from the operation of the facility, except as specifically provided in this agreement or in any other agreement entered into by the parties. And then finally, there's a signature page with the novary statements and the attachments that I mentioned.
Thank you, Jeff. Now, let me outline again, and some of you have walked in since we began. We have until nine o'clock. We'd like for you to think of the team members that are before you as partners with you. They want to hear your thoughts, your concerns, but tonight isn't the setting for debate. Jeff didn't write that agreement. This is the team putting together to date its best effort. As Jeff mentioned, there are still some differences of opinion in that regard. And finally, we're going to meet one more time, the team will, and that'll be next Tuesday, before we send our advisory to the city council. The city council ultimately, obviously, can do as it may. So we would like to hear your questions. We would like to hear your comments. There are some that probably would not be appropriate tonight. For instance, if you happen to believe that the, this whole idea is illegal, I think you need to take that up with the city council. If you think the stadium just doesn't belong downtown, I think you need to take that up with the city council. Our charge was to prepare a use agreement. Finally, I'd like to ask everybody to respect one another and be as brief as you can be while still getting across your point, so that as many of yous want to talk can. Jeff, are you gonna be the recorder?
I'll write down what I was gonna say.
Okay, and Dave, did you have a comment?
Question.
Yes.
Two questions. One, can we, do we need to open up the room so people have a place to sit? Do you folks want to sit down? We can open up the room if-
There's special chairs scattered around here.
Let's do that. Second question, why do we have only till nine o'clock?
When I reserve the base, the hall of the city is nine o'clock here. The city council is early at home. We have a couple of-
And why don't we reserve that issue if it becomes an issue slightly before nine? So if you just-
City council members want to stay longer than nine. I think we're probably stay longer than nine.
That's what I'm hearing. So if anybody would like to start?
Before we start, is everyone obviously in agreement with all of the things you guys have said?
No. And that's the point we've made a couple times.
Okay, can we, here in state, can you come and get it? Would you guys stop if you present-
Could we get everything on the microphone for the benefit of the video camera out there, which I understand is to share this meeting with viewers on MCAT.
Jeff, can we pull that mic back a little bit, maybe? The team members agreed that we weren't going to make tonight a furtherance of a debate between the team. Those who would like to maybe share in further team discussions are certainly welcome to be at that next team meeting, which will be at three thirty next Tuesday.
Hi, I'm Ross Best. Before I get into comments, I'd like to suggest that it would be helpful to us if Jeff Badnok or someone else could explain to us what the envisioned schedule for future action on all of this will be. We've been told a little bit about the team meeting next week, but there's still the blanks that are in this document. There's still the question of when the development agreement is to be prepared. So I think it would be helpful to us all if there were some outline of a probable or suspected timeframe for how things are to be done. Secondly, I think it would be helpful to us all if we could be updated on the status of the imminent domain proceeding. Now to my comments. I think it's important that this committee and everyone else interested in this know that this deal is not done, and that there is enormous opposition to this deal, and that there's no conceivable use agreement or development agreement that will be acceptable to many of us. Many of us are concerned about a variety of things. The cost of the proposal to the city, the effects upon the neighborhood and the riverfront and the park, the plunging into this project without adequate planning for that general area along the riverfront, and so forth. We're concerned about potential liability. There's liability for completion of the project. There's liability that may come up in a few years if there's a need for the backers of the project to be bailed out. There's liability that may arise if there are needed modifications or repairs in the future. Voters of Missoula have twice before rejected public funding of minor league baseball in Missoula. It's appropriate that the people should be given a chance, and that no end run around the people should be made. A lot of people love baseball, the game, but a lot of people have concerns about baseball, the business. It's inappropriate that the city of Missoula should be putting all this money, envisioned money into this project, especially in light of the way Playball went around, went about getting the funding. A year ago, we were being told that no public money would be going in. Earlier this year, we were being told that Playball would be going to the airport area pretty soon if the city didn't move quickly. Well, my understanding is that Playball couldn't get the money at the airport from the county for less than two or two and a half million dollars. Yet we're being told that Playball can't afford to cover traffic studies for the neighborhood around there. We're being told that the city with MRA funds or SID fund, tax increment funds, will share traffic calming expenses with the neighborhoods. This is just not right. Obviously, the Osprey had a successful season this year, but I'm told a similar thing happened over in Seattle a while ago, and the people got sort of railroaded into funding a team that's not quite as successful anymore. So my message to you tonight is, there is opposition here. This is not done, and everything that is done is gonna have to be done by the book. This has been a sloppy, sloppy operation so far, and it does not inspire confidence, either in Playball's ability to live up to its promises, or the city's ability to enforce those promises against Playball. Thank you.
And I was just reminded, and there was not a, we're gonna try to keep to a max of three minutes apiece.
Bill Baker, Missoula, Montana. As a Missoulian who cannot be sucker pitched by the phony grand rhetoric coming from the mayor's office and the deep thinkers at U M Center for the Rocky Mountain West, I would like to offer the Ospreys some good old fashioned Western advice. Take your team and get the hell out of town. We are sick and tired of this stadium swindle. Clueless in Missoula is an accurate description of this whole process. Like a crooked sleazy real estate deal, promoters of this scam have the wagon-
Um, you know what, sir? Sir, no. Sir, sir.
There are serious, there are serious issues that must be addressed before, before any use agreement can even be considered. One, an engineering study to determine if the site is capable of holding the facility. Two, environmental cleanup. Both cost and extent of work to be done, plus who pays. Three, permitting process. How many and what kinds will be required to dig a pit on the floodplain, let alone if riverbank reconstruction is required? What kind of timeframe is needed to secure such permits even if possible? Three, I mean four, in light of the Montana Supreme Court's recent ruling that Montanans have a right to a clean and healthful environment, the noise pollution, increased traffic, and trash generated by the stadium in the neighborhood will violate that right. Let's get real, folks. You don't even have a site for a use agreement, nor does Playball Missoula have the finances to acquire one or build a stadium. If the mayor, Playball Missoula, Missoula Real Development Agency have some grand delusions about a riverfront stadium at the old champion's site, get over it. It's not gonna happen. In conclusion, I would say years of scientific research has determined that baseball is a communist plot designed to destroy the minds of America's youth, and judging by the mentality of the overaged jocks promoting this scam, they have succeeded magnificently. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think it's really unfortunate if we can't express ourselves in a respectful manner. No personal attacks is not necessary. We've had a lot of serious discussions and serious conflicts among the team members. Somehow, they were able to get through it in a respectful manner.
Mr. Facilitator, I would like to remind you that there has been very little chance for the members of this community to comment on this project, and please give these people a little leeway.
A little leeway.
My name is Dale McCormick. I live at six twenty-one Rue Street. I'll try to keep my comments to the use agreement, go through the points that I, notes that I made during the course of the presentation earlier. First one I have addresses item number six, which is dealing with alcohol consumption of tailgate parties. It doesn't state when they can start. Given the way it's worded here, people can pull up and start drinking at ten in the morning if they want. I'm not sure I'd like that in the neighborhood. Auxiliary uses of the facility, number seven. I remember in one of the earliest presentations, Joe Easton described the playing field as a dance floor, and wanted to preserve the pristine quality of that. And I'm puzzled when I hear and see in this proposal of livestock shows and circuses, which don't seem consistent, or rock shows, and I'm confused by the inconsistencies. Point eleven, on an earlier draft dated August tenth, the noise ordinance did not allow an exemption, and I'm wondering why that exemption had to be put back into this use agreement, especially in light of the fact that events taking place at Karis Park this summer were, in last summer, were shut down because of having to abide by that sound ordinance. And I realize that that was a rock concert versus a baseball game, but the fact is they're both civic events, and we should be consistent as a city in that. I was puzzled by Steve King's response to the question of lights in the parking lot, that they're not required by city ordinances. So I'm not sure what this says when it says it conforms with city ordinances. If that says that there aren't gonna be any lights in the parking lot, that's not necessarily a good thing. Going on to the Extraordinary Events Committee, the, the composition of that, which is point thirteen, as far as I can figure, there are three representatives from the adjacent neighborhoods out of a group of nine people that are making the decisions. So that, to my thinking, doesn't really allow much of an opportunity for the neighborhoods to influence the outcome of decisions made in that committee. And I would suggest that perhaps a council member from Ward One where this event would be placed would be added to that group, bringing at least four of the nine members to be representing the neighborhood. And I am puzzled that there is not gonna be a traffic study. It seems ludicrous to spend this much money as a city and not understand the implications of traffic flow in the neighborhood. And relative to traffic issues, it says traffic calming, the city will test ways, and I wonder what that specifically means. Does that mean a meeting? Does that mean putting some barricade in the street to test what physically would happen? It would be good to get clarification on that. As a neighborhood, we didn't ask for the increased traffic, and I don't understand why we should be asked to bear the burden of the expense of that increased traffic. I'm confused why MRA funds aren't used for this kind of improvement. I'm also somewhat disturbed by the idea of using as a park and ride. As I understand, a park and ride would be a place where people would be parking any time during the day, any time during the week, using that parking lot. So really, addressing the traffic problems by saying, we're gonna close down the streets and we're gonna have traffic control during these events, doesn't clearly address what a park and ride would do to the neighborhood, and that concerns me. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think there are gonna be a number of concerns about the traffic, and our thought would be that after we hear all those, that we can maybe have Steve address at least some of the concerns, and that's one of the reasons he's here tonight. Next commenter, please.
I just have a question. I do not live in the neighborhood. I live at two twenty Livingston. I'm really opposed to this project. When would be a good time to come to the council and express my objection and staying-
Public hearing. Public hearing.
Public hearing will be, do we know when yet?
No. After the use agreement goes back to this advisory board, they'll, it'll then go to the mayor, and he will make a recommendation, a referral to the city council. The city council will then go through its normal processes, and then there will be an official public hearing to voice any concerns at that time. an official public hearing to voice any concerns at that time, and it's just gonna depend on the committee's schedules.
My name is Don Stinger. I live at 245 North Davis. This is somewhat to the west of the thing, but I heard a remark earlier about the no planning. There is some planning going on. It's in the P A Z Committee right now. They didn't have time to finalize it this week. It'll come out next week, but it's urban renewal district number two, and it extends from Orange Street along the river and to Reserve Street, or to Russell Street, rather, excuse me, and north to Third Street, south to Third Street, between the river. Third Street's the south boundary and, and the river's the north boundary. And they, I'll read what they, this is their O P G words now. "The center of the planning area is a vacant former lumber mill. It has been designated for heavy industry for the last thirty years. Yet currently, it appears unlikely that the most reasonable use of these lands is for a new lumber mill. This site is central to Missoula as a whole and contains resource damaged lands, particularly what, in what was historically the Clark Fork River floodplain. This site has city sewers and trails and roads linking it to downtown Missoula. This plan proposes the creation of an example of a neighborhood center with urban residential and commercial uses, riverfront, floodplain, park, and simple but interesting architecture in this area. Views of the surrounding hillside and riverfront are available and can be optimized with a development pattern that incorporates the development guidelines for this plan amendment. At this writing, a minor league baseball park is being proposed for the center of this planning area. A public process should be developed to determine both, to determine both the public interest and the public benefit of any large development proposal for this planning area. Public opinion expressed in meetings during the planning process for this plan update suggests that the neighborhood would readily engage in such a process, and I have been one of the people that have been engaged in this process." Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jean Curtis. I live north of the river. My comment would be on the, the traffic patterns for the streets there, that in this agreement you didn't discuss Orange Street and Russell Street. Right now, the intersection of Craig and Orange Street is absolutely a nightmare, not just because of the trucks that are hauling dirt in there, but because people cross the lanes of traffic. I think that you need to add Orange Street and Russell Street. As they come out of, or go into that stadium, they shouldn't be crossing lanes of traffic. They should be required to always turn right, not left. The other thing that I would, is, am concerned about is causing the neighborhood to take on the cost of any traffic lights. When Walmart came into Missoula and we made some concessions for them, we also made them pay for their own traffic light, and I would think that would be appropriate in this situation also.
Thank you.
My name's Dave Havlik. Here to represent the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Board for the city, and our comments may actually be a little tepid compared to some of the others that will be aired here tonight, but we prepared, prepared a letter that I'd like to read, that I hope you'll include in the official record. "We are concerned that only a small share of the fans will actually travel to the games by foot or on bicycle. We want to maximize the portion who actually do. Therefore, we encourage development of a plan which will actually result in a significant share of the fans coming to the park from home or work by bike or on foot or by public transportation." Second point, adequate onsite secure bicycle parking, realistic incentives for fans to bike or walk from home or work to the games, consideration of scheduling games in the daytime which will make walking and bicycling to them more likely. Number two, the impact of a substantial share of the fans coming to the game by car will likely be increased traffic and fans parking in residential areas. We encourage a plan which will mitigate this impact, including consideration of offsite parking and a shuttle service. Three, we strongly believe that over the long term, the riverfront must be preserved as an attractive environment in which Missoulians can enjoy bicycling and walking for purposes other than coming to ballgames. We encourage constructing the ballpark and any adjacent parking so as to enhance the riverfront as an attractive environment in which to walk and bicycle, constructing a bicycle pedestrian trail along the riverfront in a corridor wide enough for landscaping to create a feeling of somewhat natural setting. Four, we encourage, or we are concerned that non-motorized travelers to the ballpark will have adequate roadway facilities. We encourage redevelopment of Craig Lane during the construction of the new Orange Street Bridge, that will have adequate sidewalks and bike lanes from Orange Street to the ballpark. And five, we gladly offer to review the specific, specific plans for the ballpark site and to offer suggestions directly to the developers." So, that's our letter, and then on a personal note, I'm also, I live about four blocks from the site, and, so speaking as me rather than the committee, I think it's important, if, if this is gonna be developed as a, a, a public site, that the public have access to the site and that not just be restricted to six times a year that the city has access. We should treat it as a public park, and it should be open to the public during daylight hours as any public park would be. And I recognize there are concerns about the treatment of the field, but I think those certainly can be accommodated, and there's many precedents set around the country of places that have a stadium that's available to the public day in and day out. I think it's important we create a livable, open space, and not just sort of a shell of a stadium that sits there and is used thirty times a year. I think that the team should, should look at creating a legal pedestrian and bicycle route across M R L Railroad Bridge, and that should be secured as part of this agreement. I think that bridge already gets a lot of use, illegal use currently. If this stadium goes into that site, that use is gonna increase dramatically. It provides a valuable pedestrian and bicycle link to the other side of the river, and it could actually help alleviate parking and congestion on the south side of the river. And then finally, park and ride sites and shuttle sites are certainly better suited to outlying areas rather than the stadium if we're going to try to use them as a way of reducing car trips or vehicle miles. So, using the area as a shuttle site or park and ride makes a little sense to me. So, thanks.
Thank you. And anybody who has something prepared or wants to prepare it, and submit it, it might make it easier. I see Jeff writing as fast as he can, but if you can leave a copy, the team can then review that as well.
Good evening. James Karkoulis. When I first did any consideration of the siding of the stadium, the cost benefit analysis that I came up with for the taxpayer, quite frankly, says that the Champion Site is going to be the least impact to the taxpayer when everything is said and done. And I preface that simply by saying that I do think at some point in time that the taxpayer, the city, is going to have to come up with a fair amount of money to support this stadium. Whether that's good or bad, I'm not gonna make a decision. I am going to say that I think with the Champion Site, we have an opportunity to create an environment in the day, in the, in this U R D two area that has seemingly been overlooked as far as the preliminary planning for U R D two. I have problems with the use agreement because I have problems with what Playball, Playball Missoula needs to do. They need to raise an inordinate amount of money to facilitate the construction and the repayment of any debt that they will incur. I would prefer if they do that. I would prefer if somebody else is under the guise of the lease agreement and is operating the facilities, because even with Playball Missoula's projections, unless they've changed from two or three months ago, they're still in a position whereby the revenue from the stadium really is a drop in the bucket. Personally, and this is personal, but after seeing what the economic health, preferred initiatives would be from the Missoulian 2000 Conference, of which the overwhelming support for the number one benefit to this community would be a civic stadium, I think if we are going to have revenue stream coming from that area, we need to consider a facility that has year-round capabilities. That means realistically, we're going to have to put something that, that can be under roof of five to ten thousand square feet to make this thing, I'm not only visionary, but it really pan out for the city of Missoula over the long haul. So, my concern is simply the taxpayer concern here, and I certainly wish that we make sure that everything is in line and that we know that this money can be raised in an environment that is going to be conducive to this community. When you see Missoula Children's Theater trying to raise the money after it's built, it's a whole different scenario, and I think it's an important area that we have to consider when we look at the overall ramifications to the community. But make no mistake, the Champion Site is the best site for this city, and this is where it needs to go. Thank you.
Jeff, I'll save you writing this down. We'll submit this in, in writing so you can alleviate your writer's cramp. My name is Way Sims. I'm here representing Playball Missoula. First of all, I'd like to thank the team. I don't think anybody's really said that. You had a thankless task here of trying to accommodate all the various interests, including Playball Missoula, the neighborhood, I think, all the various interests that were involved, and I think you did a pretty good job. I, I attended two of the meetings. Commend the facilitator. I think they were civil. I think that there was no attempt to cover up any disagreements, and it looked to me like the meetings that I attended, they were done with an attempt to reach a consensus. So, I commend you all, and thank you for all the time you spent on it. We, as a group, Playball Missoula, can sign this agreement as it's been agreed to, and as I understand it by the team, with one exception, one change that we would ask be made. And the reason we can sign it is because we believe it strikes a reasonable balance between the interests of, of the neighbors, to the proposed facility, the lessors of the facility, and the city in general, understanding nobody's gonna get a hundred percent of what they want, but I think that there's a balance that's been reached here. The, the, no agreement that you come to is going to totally mitigate all of the things that would adversely impact the, the neighborhood. And I, just as an example, you look at the Farmer's Market, Bonner Park Band Concerts, Washington Griesley Stadium, McCormick Park Softball, the city's three high schools, or the new Civic Stadium. Some people are going to be inconvenienced by it. It's just a fact of living in a city. The one change that we would ask the committee to make, or the team, relates to paragraph twenty-four, which is default. And for those of you that are, that have the agreement, or those of you don't, I'll read it anyway, it's very brief, says if Playball violates or fails to abide by the provisions of the agreement and fails to take immediate corrective action within thirty days, written notice of a violation or default, Playball, which says will, shall, shall, be deemed to have forfeited its privileges and management rights with respect to the operation of the facility. It's very unclear, probably not fair. It says it's, basically, it's not clear how the determination would be made, who would make it, or how Playball could participate in it. So, in order for us to sign this agreement, I think that would have to be stricken. It's just too vague. We do, we can support the draft agreement with that change. We do have some other comments, which again, we'll do in writing. The, the one thing that is important to us, and that is the exemption of baseball games from the noise level requirements of the city noise ordinance. We can't sign an agreement, a use agreement, without this exemption, and we wouldn't sign it without that exemption for a simple reason. No one can guarantee that crowd noise will not at some times violate the noise levels in the ordinance. We're not in favor of subjecting the nearby neighborhoods to unreasonable noise levels, but the use agreement states that Playball will endeavor to minimize the use of all amplified sound during minor league professional baseball games, which continue after permitted hours, so that the intent of the municipal noise ordinance is observed. So, I think the intent of this is to minimize the intrusion into the neighborhood. So, if, if that variance were not granted, it would be basically a, a decision that the stadium could not be sited within the city, whether it's the Champion Site or any other site. The, we're in favor, obviously, here of the, the provision for beer and wine use. The draft document provides for controlled sale by, by the Osprey of beer and table wine at baseball games. I think that the Osprey demonstrated in this past summer the responsible monitoring of the alcohol use at the facility at Lindborg Craig Field. About fifteen more seconds. Oh, okay. Well, I'll, I'll go through very quickly, you know, we, we're in agreement with the traffic calming provisions of the agreement, and just going through here to summarize, or to get through this quickly, the, the role of the, the neighborhood councils in city projects. We are very much in favor of, of addressing the concerns of the neighborhood in planning and execution of any city projects, but that we do not feel that the neighborhood council should be given veto power over such projects. And our, our reading of the draft indicates that they would not have that, but we would like to, to address maybe paragraph four, and I'll do that in writing, and maybe tighten that language up a little bit. I, I get through my, my time. Thank you all. Thank you.
My name's Jeff Jordan. I live here in Missoula. I have one question and one suggestion, if I may. The one question I have is, it's my understanding that the current site was condemned, and that's why the eminent domain was used, and my concern is, why build a public site in an area that's been condemned by the city in order for the city to get it? And I guess, and it, as part of that question, who's going to pay for the cleanup? Is that gonna be Playball, or is that gonna be the Missoula taxpayer? My, my suggestion is, what, what would be wrong with a site right behind the Votec, right, right near Sentinel? It offers parking at Sentinel, parking at Votec, parking at the Fairgrounds. No additional lights or structures to put in as far as the, the city's concerned, and the facility could be designed to benefit the high school as well for its sports and athletic activities.
My name is Cynthia Kingston. I live in the McCormick neighborhood and feel that our neighborhood is going to be greatly impacted. I am trying to keep an open mind. I feel strongly that we do need traffic calming devices. If and when they are put in, the neighborhood should not be responsible for payment. I still, still feel that this process is bypassing us. We have had several neighborhood meetings, but it doesn't seem like our comments are being received. We're speaking to one another and agreeing with one another, but we don't seem to be receiving much response from Playball and the people who are making decisions. I can see some reasons why this, this area is chosen, but you're asking an area of the city to pay very heavily for this decision, and if it does go ahead, I think that you really need to put more effort into mitigating the impacts that are going to be forced upon our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Mary Helen McNeil. I live at 301 South Second Street West. Thank you for your work and the opportunity to comment. I'm also disappointed that the mayor's not here to receive our comments tonight. and two, the impact on the city for this business decision. I think it's wonderful we had the chance to be here tonight and comment, but I'd like to point out that paragraph 28 says that either party to this agreement, the parties of the city and Playball, can amend or modify the agreement at any time. No opportunity for any community input down the road. Paragraph three says that the agreement can be renewed for two additional five-year terms. The city cannot refuse to renew the agreement. There's no opportunity for any community input at that stage of the game. Playball only has to give 90 days' notice of its intention to renew. Even if there was an opportunity for city input, there wouldn't be sufficient time to get that together. Again, you asked for our input. Paragraph three says, "This agreement shall incorporate the terms and conditions of the professional baseball lease agreement." It's not attached. We don't know what it says. Best I can tell, you don't know what it says. We know Playball told us at one point, professional leagues said you have to have X number of parking spaces per seats. It says something, and presumably, other things that will have an impact on how this plays out and what this agreement should say. I haven't seen it, and it doesn't sound like anyone else, no one else that I know of here has seen that agreement, yet it's incorporated, and legally, it's part of this agreement. Same thing with paragraph four in the manual policies. Basically, it says, "It's going to be created by Playball for approval by the city, which approval shouldn't be reasonably withheld. There is some opportunity for community input, but almost none." There's an extraordinary events committee, which only has three community members on it out of nine. I like this gentleman's idea of adding the members of the council, and I would suggest two members of the council from the adjacent neighborhoods. Extraordinary events are not defined. There are numerous other problems, which I won't sort of outline. For better or for worse, I happen to be a lawyer, so I read the agreement with that in mind, and I think about the deal, this is sort of the second category of my comments, that the city's making here. Basically, the city's making a business deal, and that's a good thing. But can you imagine any other business deal where you basically agree with a provision that says, "We'll try to keep the noise down if we can. We won't catalog what's allowed and what's not, because we don't know yet. We haven't seen the attachments, but we trust they'll be okay. We'll determine what goes in the manual policies at a later date. We'll look into the shuttle buses if we can, and we trust that we all make agreements about using parking in other places." I don't think the city would enter into any other kind of business deal without knowing those kinds of specifics. Finally, certainly, even in paragraph 21, there's a suggestion that the city will have liability here. Playball has agreed to name them as an additional insured. The amount on the insurance policy is $1.5 million. I don't pretend to know anything about business transactions. Doesn't strike me as very much. I don't think the city would be named as an additional insured if there wasn't some concern that the city had some liability. I think there are also other expenses that will fall to the city that are not covered and from which the city is not protected. I trust that the city's lawyer will also look at this carefully, if he hasn't already, and hopefully, address some of these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Another comment?
A few. These don't represent all that I would like to say, but I hope they'll be helpful. Jeff, do you or anybody else know what is meant by the Major League Baseball standards? Are those published anywhere, or are they someplace?
Lighting, conditions of people inside of the facility, of the new seats.
Is...
Yes, we have it.
Okay. Okay. I think that it's important for the neighborhood to be able to take a look at those standards. Obviously, these standards, all of these things that are listed here will be done to the standard that's good for baseball. My question is, will they be done to the standard that's good for the community? I was talking with a gentleman in another town about lighting for their stadium, and discovered that good lighting is astronomically expensive. Are you folks going to be getting the kind of lighting that will make the residents, and those of us who pass the streets, feel comfortable? Or is it just going to be lighting that's good for baseball? And I want to say the same thing about the sound system as well. We haven't heard anything about that state-of-the-art sound system, other than that it's going to be state-of-the-art. But the community needs to know, they need to be able to visit other places where those kinds of sound systems and lighting systems are in place to know what they're up against. Otherwise, it's just kind of a generalized pledge of goodwill on your part. I think that needs to be stated within this agreement before the city makes it. Secondly, if Playball can't raise the money, who's left withholding the debt? I think that needs to be stated in here, so that there's no hidden, not hidden agenda, but it's not hidden or neglected, that we know precisely what's going to happen to the taxpayer if that money is not raised. Finally, number 28, termination. The parties may consider termination or any modification with the agreement of both the parties. Well, any modification might not suit the community and the citizens of the city at all. I think there needs to be a third party involved in any modification that is agreed to between these other two parties, because by the time this agreement is signed, the neighborhood is pretty much a victim of whatever takes place. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Cook, 644 South First West. I own and live in the house right on the corner of First and Hickory. So, I wanted to give you a little perspective about what it looks like to me, what it would be like to live near this. I don't think it'll be a good place to raise a family. I don't think there's any way I'm going to be able to live there and stand it. So, I'm probably going to end up having to move. That's just me personally, and I'll tell you why. Who would want to live near something you're going to have to fight year after year? It's so open-ended. I've heard, I don't know how many times, that there won't be any loud rock concerts, but there's nothing in the use agreement about that. I went to the last mitigation meeting, and the reason was that you couldn't decide how to phrase it, and it's just kind of hard to believe that, you know, I could phrase everything else and not that. I thought that traffic calming circles or the traffic calming devices would be sort of a given for something, a project of this magnitude. I know that I'm probably personally going to be liable for buying sidewalks and curbs to the tune of $6,000 to $8,000. Add in the traffic calming circle expenses, and realize that a lot of my neighbors are renters, the people that own those rental properties, aren't going to want to spend any money. I don't, you know, it's, how is it going to happen? And it's worded really vaguely in here. It's just not seeming to be a responsible development. And it's my understanding from, I couldn't go to the mitigation meetings, because they were held during the day, at a time people that normally work are at work, so I only went to the one, but it's my understanding that there wasn't going to be any tailgate parties. That's in here, and there's already quite a few problems with people drinking in the park, speeding up and down the road. It's become sort of this, like, lawless alcohol free-for-all zone. And if Playball's committed to having family-oriented values, you know, in a setting like that, what does that have to do with tailgate parties? People drinking in their cars, arriving with alcohol, drinking, I don't know, you know, you can begin to serve at an hour before the game, but like someone else said, it's just the whole area is going to be like this. And maybe years from now, it'll all pan out, but why would people want to live near this in the interim? You know, I just see it as becoming a blighted area. You know, and then Hickory Street, I've been told numerous times that Hickory Street, you know, you're going to try not to use it. Why wouldn't someone park in front of my house? How will I come home and park when it's free to park in front of my house, and it costs $3 or $4 to park in the lot? People aren't stupid, they're just going to, you know, I won't be able to park when I come home. If people come, you know, someone wants to come over, they won't be able to park. Why would I stay? Why wouldn't I want to raise a child in a neighborhood where I have drunk people coming up and down the streets, driving up and down the streets, and have it cost me money? I just, and back to the traffic calming again, I went down and talked to Carl Thompson, and he was completely against traffic calming. We're not a truck route, but legally, any service or semi-vehicles can use the shortest distance. We're going to get stomped. I don't see any way around it. And I think that a lot of time was spent in the mitigation meetings discussing, you know, getting it out of McCormick Park, basically, you know, from our perspective. And I don't think a lot of time was really spent on trying to mitigate the impacts of this. I think it's a wide-open document, and I wish you had more time to spend, maybe if there were different personalities or whatever, but this isn't state-of-the-art, and it's not neighborhood-friendly. And the parts that seem the easiest to do, they're not in here. And, you know, I don't want to leave. I feel an affinity for the area and the historic nature, and I don't want to see it blighted. And that's what will happen. I lost a tenant in a cottage already, because he saw it coming, and he found a better place to go, because he didn't want to live through the construction period. That's just going to happen. That's going to be a year. But after that, you know, people need and want to have a reason to be able to stay and be there, and I think you could work a little bit harder. Basically, the things that I've heard, they're frightening. They're, Jeff said he can't park in front of his house. We've taken, so it'll be okay for us not to park in front of our house. Gerald said people drive fast on the way to Snowball past your house, so that should be okay for us to have high-speed people driving down our neighborhood streets. And it seems like we've taken the worst aspect of all these problems and just sort of said, "Well, they'll be okay." And the only one workable solution in here, from my viewpoint, is the street closure. And that's not long-term, that's just year by year, and how there won't be an outcry for the softball and park users to open up the streets. I just don't see it. I see it as being just a stopgap, something that's temporary, and, you know, won't have time to react and move away. It just, you know, it's a good idea, but it's, again, temporary, and the best things about this, I'll have the word temporary, or don't know in them, and I just would like to see it go back and work a little bit harder. And if you don't want to have loud rock concerts, I think you could say that. I can't believe you're not smart enough to figure out how to say it, you know? And I think that there's enough money with MRA that it shouldn't cost me thousands of dollars to live near this thing, because I'm losing. The quality of life in the neighborhood is going to be much less. This isn't going to be a good thing for us. There's nothing in it for us. The sunsets will be ruined. Personally, the lights, even if they're, you know, high-quality, shine in the field, they're going to shine in my bedroom window. I know what it's like now with people coming by that are drinking all the time. More drunk people are not going to make it a better place to live, you know? And I think some of these things could be addressed. And I don't understand why you need tailgate parties again. I guess that's about it. There's many, many things, and three minutes isn't much time. I wish that there was more time for public comment, and if you want to make a state-of-the-art, neighborhood-friendly facility, that's one thing. This isn't quite that animal, and I don't know how it could be, but, you know, I would like to see it, you know? I would like not to have to move. I would like to not have to be the Pinkerton man on the street picking up trash every day and dealing with drunk people. And I think, you know, you could do some things about that. You could work to mitigate the drinking in McCormick Park. When they made drinking illegal in Caris Park, there was an immediate effect in our neighborhood, and it seems like that's been the solution, is just push problems down the river when they happen in the city. And we're not like the U area. We don't have enough lawyers to, like, run this thing out, maybe. But, you know, we could use some assistance, and let's not blight this area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm beginning to feel like I was the only person at the Osprey Games last summer that wasn't drunk. They're not all drunks, okay, you guys? Jackie Pertily, I've been a homeowner in Missoula for 19 years, seven on South Second Street West. I'd like to thank this group for all of the work you've put into this agreement. I can just imagine how challenging it's been, particularly when you're dealing with a neighborhood of kind of the granola center of Missoula in a sports complex. That's a little difficult. That's a big challenge to try and put that together, and I really applaud you guys for everything that you've done. I'm excited about the opportunity to get the Champion Site cleaned up and to have a ballpark there. I think that's really a great idea. I think it's a very positive opportunity that we have here for families and for the youth in Missoula. I think it's just one of the best things that we can have to offer. I'm excited personally to be able to walk to the Games. I just, I wish more people could maybe open their minds a little bit more and see things a little bit differently. I understand that there's a lot of people in my neighborhood that have concerns about the traffic situations. I personally don't. It isn't wigging me out, but I will say that I think it's great it's been addressed and that you're talking about those things. I think, I think it's difficult to move forward on positive things in this community, and I think at some point, we need to have some faith. It sort of, when you listen to all this stuff, it sort of makes you wonder how anything ever gets going in this town. It's just sort of not possible to move forward on something that's positive and know every single little detail prior to getting it done. And at some point, I think you have to have some faith. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Deirdre Black. I live at 244 South Second West. I've owned that house for about 15 years, but I've lived within a block or two of that house for over 20. I guess I'm one of the crunchy folks. My, I have a lot of concerns about the use agreement, but let me just go through a few of them. Issues, well, tailgate parties. Upset. The noise ordinance issues. In one place, it actually claims that only baseball events are exempt, and later on, it says that certain events can be exempt. It doesn't state to what extent the noise ordinance can be violated, for how long it can be violated by these other events. I think that's kind of scary. And that all the power in making those decisions goes to the Civic Stadium Extraordinary Events Committee. Now, since the Caris Park Extraordinary Events Committee has not been a terribly effective instrument to that end, I'd like to know what specific criteria will be used to make such determinations. I'd like that committee to have written criteria to follow. My next set of issues concerns estimates on costs for the taxpayers. I don't think any of you guys have actually laid out what the potential costs are, and I'd like to see some of those, especially given the fact that the Missoulians generally are being held accountable for financing parts of this endeavor, and the neighborhood specifically, residents of the neighborhood, for traffic calming specifically. While we take financial responsibility, then, if, with respect to traffic calming and with respect to problems they may have running the stadium, there's really no incentive for those guys, for Playball, to do it right the first time. There's no penalties in this agreement for them not doing a good job. They need to have an incentive to do a good job. They need some serious penalties in here, because the only penalty is on us, that if they don't do well, make a mistake, we take responsibility, and I believe that that's what this means. Expenses and costs, that Playball shall be responsible for any and all bills, expenses and costs incurred with respect to the operation of the facility up to the date of the city's taking possession. That's kind of scary. That's way wide open. They need penalties in there. They need an incentive to do a good job. I just want to remark that this stadium project is inconsistent with the URD2 plan, and I guess, I'm assuming you guys have read that plan. We spent a lot of money on that plan. You should read that plan. I'd like to know what this, this really inappropriate phrase is. I assume it's legalese. Playball shelved in '27, quiet possession. Can anybody tell me what that is? That would be nice for us to know what quiet possession means, given the fact that when the neighborhood asks for quiet possession, that scene is unreasonable. I'd also like to ask, have all of you read the Major Baseball, Professional Baseball Agreement? I think... I'd like to know what this, this really inappropriate phrase is. I, I assume it's legalese. Play Ball Shelby in twenty-seven, quiet possession. Can anybody tell me what that is? That would be nice for us to know what quiet possession means, given the fact that when the neighborhood asks for quiet possession, that scene is unreasonable. Um, I'd also like to ask, have all of you read the major baseball, professional baseball agreement? I think that that's naive. And I think any of us who would go into buying a house believing that everything's okay, believing that, um, we don't need an inspection, that the loan agreements are in place, uh, things like that, having faith in that way is naive. That if you're going to make a business deal, then make a serious business deal and don't make a, the citizen repay for sloppy business on your end. And finally, I guess, and I'd like, I'd also like to see the professional baseball agreement. I'd like to read it. Finally, the statement on page one that says, "A vibrant downtown is supported and enhanced by a quality residential environment." I think you need to really strike that, that really what is going on here is a vibrant downtown is supported and enhanced by debilitating a particular, sacrificing a particular residential neighborhood. Let's just be honest about what's going on.
Uh, I live at seven fifteen West Bruce. And first off, I'd like to say congratulations, Lois. And, uh, I'd, I'd like to thank the committee for all the work that, that they've done too. I'm sure this, it isn't the, the best of jobs or the easiest. Um, I, I understand people's concerns about alcohol consumption, but I think if you take a look at what happened out at the, um, at the ball field, uh, out on Tower, Tower Street? Is that where it was? Tower Street this last year? You can see that, uh, it was pretty responsible and it wasn't just a bunch of drunks and yahoos, uh, hanging out trying to see who could out drink the others. Um, it, it was, it was real responsible, uh, drinking. I'd like to say that, uh, there is a, there is another, uh, neighborhood and that's, uh, the downtown business community. I'm, I'm a member of the Missoula Downtown Association. And we're very much for this. We see it, we see it really good. Uh, I think here tonight, we've been dwelling a lot on possible negatives and a lot of these are based on fears and, and prejudices, uh, but there are many positives. Uh, be bring a lot of revenue into Missoula and into the downtown. And it will be, uh, a lighting the fire to create something wonderful that is already a blight in that area. And, uh, I hope you folks come up with something. We really want to have it right down there. Thank you.
My name is Harry Seibert. I live at two hundred Imperial Way, which is clear out of the area. Uh, but I thought, well, tonight I want to come down. Uh, first of all, your general agreement here is just too loose. You could drive a Mack truck through most of it. Uh, I would never sign a contract with these type of things in it. Uh, I think, for instance, when you're talking about maintenance of the facility, you want to describe it in great detail and you want them to put up a one percent of the total development cost in a trust fund to maintain it. And if, if you're going to spend five million dollars there, it's going to cost you something to maintain it. And a one percent trust fund would be fifty thousand dollars a year. Cause with the lack of revenue that those people are probably going to have, uh, it's going to be difficult to get things done. I, I thought we were going to do a baseball stadium and I'd like to know what a civic and, uh, how do you describe it here? Construct a civic stadium which includes a major league professional baseball park. Uh, I don't know what that is. Can someone tell me? Um, and they're, they're just area after area here. We talk, talk about something being clean. Uh, not really, fellas and women. I think you have to be specific if you're going to obfuscate the city. Uh, it's interesting that we want to bring in a business, the only way it can survive is by selling al, selling alcohol. When we are spending large amounts of money in this country treating alcohol, it's not that all baseball players are alcoholics, no way. But to say that a business has to have that to survive, I would just be glad way goodbye to you. Uh, in fact, you're saying that first you can have as many drinks as you want, you just can't buy more than two at a time. You've left the, um, in section seven, it, it's wide open when you talk cultural, social, political events consistent with use of the city park. Go over to, um, again, uh, facility, maintenance and operation, I'm just saying, define good, define clean, define safe. And on what type of schedule you want that done. For instance, you want the stadium cleaned up every night, whenever the crowd's out of there. Immediately after the crowd leaves, that place should be cleaned, not scrap of paper on it. That would be my idea of cleaning it up. Uh, noise ordinance, I would say, uh, put a time limit on it. And they either drastically put their amplifier system down to about a hundred decibels measured at three or four hundred feet away or turn it off after, after a certain time. This thing again is too vague. Over in thirteen, you're talking about unduly jeopardize, jeopardize the facility? What would that be? Uh, th, th, this thing is vague throughout. I'm not saying people haven't put the time in on this, believe me. Whenever you quote another city ordinance, I would suggest if you do, you, you quote the appropriate section out of it so we would know what you're talking about. And I, I've referred to the noise ordinance. That one may have a statement in it that said, do the best you can to control noise. So really, you haven't, you haven't done anything. I, I would like to suggest two possibilities on fifteen. Either require Play Baseball to take care of everything. Because tonight, I finally learned what adding insult to injury is. And that's why I say either take them out, don't make the, the people around here pay anything. Play Baseball's going to pay it or change the title at adding insult to injury because well, you talk about the government doing two of, doing two rather than four. Signs and advertising, none. None that are going to be painted and stand up there all year long. They could be, uh, signs that are electronic in nature and do a display while the game's being played, the game's over, they're off. So that the people don't have to look at them all the time they go through there. I've watched some college games where they play in some of these small stadiums and the media did solid billboard, that, that's the fence, is a billboard all the way around it. And I think that's what these people would put here. And I'd say, no way. Or if you don't agree with that, give the owner a square foot of that, the time you need to get. But don't let them determine how much. Now, I was quite impressed going through it, that, that it was real vague. This is not an agreement. And I know you've said it's a rough draft, but if you just change the legal things, you should go through it and leave these other substantial issues. Based on the emotion I've heard these people say here, I think you'd face a lawsuit if the city goes ahead and city council goes ahead and, and does it. I remember some of the resentment against Save the Fort when the city said, uh, no way, we can't override that developer. We did. The state paid him money that they shouldn't have, but, uh, we paid him money we shouldn't have. But that decision was overridden. And, and I feel for you people being put in the position that you're in. Cause there could be a lot of resentment. And, um, I hope there'll be some more drafts of this we could see and if you pick up and really pin it down, more like a contract.
Thank you, sir.
At the sake of sounding like a grandmother and a mother and a preacher, I have to say the rules we learned as children. Do unto others as you would like others to do unto you. Be respectful, be responsible. I guess I'm involved in this personally, so it's pretty hard for me to make straight objective statements. I'm real concerned about the noise ordinance. The three concerts that were at Caris Park were horrendous in my neighborhood. I live right across the river from there on South Second West. I feel for the people who are very close, right in the neighborhood of the Champion site. Please think about it so we don't end up with slums surrounding the downtown area. And those of us who work very, very hard in that neighborhood to take care of our property, to do what is right, to be responsible and respectful, can stay in those homes that we take care of. Personally, my husband and I have talked also about leaving the neighborhood. We love our neighborhood, it's charming. We have wonderful neighbors. That's what we have in Missoula. That makes Missoula charming. Let's keep it and let's make this a community, citywide affair that makes the city better for everybody. Doreen Mike Dyer, three thirty-five South Second West.
I'd, I'd just like to reiterate, um, my suggestion that I made earlier about, uh, the other site behind the VOTEC. Simply because it, it's going to be a minimal cost to the taxpayer, the, the parking already exists, the traffic, uh, flow already exists. Uh, it seems to me the biggest problem, uh, in this whole thing i- is the opposition of the community because of its proximity and the traffic flow. Uh, I think right there behind the VOTEC is, to the best of my knowledge, the land is already publicly owned. Um, you have the, you have the traffic, you have the parking, uh, minimal cost, minimal, minimal opposition. Um, and you can also help the, the schools. Um, and I think based on what I've heard tonight and what I've, what I've read in the papers and seen, um, I'm going to initiate, uh, that proposal, uh, the first opportunity I get to have the site moved to behind the VOTEC. And if there's anybody here that would like to help me with that, uh, I will stay after the meeting because that's what I feel is best. Thank you.
Any other comments? Steve, I, I wonder if maybe you could spend a few minutes just generally talking about, uh, things that have been brought up about traffic, which there seem to be a number of them. From Orange and Russell mitigation to, uh, other test surveys, uh, traffic calming measures, uh, neighborhood cost of lights.
Thank you. Once again, my name's Steve King. I work for the City Public Works Department. I want to acknowledge that I work for the city. Obviously, the city's a party to this agreement, so a potential conflict of interest on my part should be acknowledged and recognized upfront. I've tried to be objective and as open as possible in any type of process. I'm not at anybody's side. I'm trying to make, um, best project as possible if it goes forward in this location. There's a lot of issues here. Um, let's start with traffic calming, neighborhood traffic calming. That's a, a real important issue. As land use changes in a community, um, there's a tendency for changes in those transportation patterns. So we're trying to deal with a change in a transportation pattern that can be anticipated. You put a, a major development on the Champion Mill site and there is going to be a change in the, in the traffic flows in that neighborhood. So, um, let, let me take a, a broad approach first before we get to Hickory or California Street or Wyoming or any of the adjacent streets, South Second or Cottonwood. The city has a traffic calming program. The city council has authorized the Public Works Department through its bicycle pedestrian program to have a annual traffic calming program. It's based on application by neighborhoods. There's a perceived problem in a neighborhood, neighborhood representatives apply to the city for, um, temporary traffic calming. The idea is to try something out, to get something on the ground that's mutually agreeable from the technical staff, the emergency services, the bus company, those types of, um, overseeing administrative agencies and the neighborhood. The neighborhood has to live with these facilities. So we strongly believe that any type of a traffic calming facility needs to be, um, experimented with. It needs to be tried out. It needs to, um, be placed here and maybe it may, it's bigger, smaller, maybe it's removed, located. So any assumption that you can just put traffic signals at, at a given intersection and walk away without an analysis or modification or enhancement of that facility is not our approach. We take a more systematic approach. So we try something in a temporary basis and it might be at Cottonwood, at River or, or Hickory, uh, um, you know, at, uh, at South First. Though, though, and we've got a list here of specific locations, which I don't think is, um, exclusive. In other words, there could be other intersections in the areas that may be impacted that may want to be considered as well. I'm thinking of California Street and Idaho, Wyoming, Dakota corridors on the west side of the potential facility certainly, as well as the immediate areas south. So there is that big, bigger program. Um, once it's, uh, it's established that it's effective, the people want to live with it, then we go back to a community and say, would you like to pay for it? And this is where a real sensitivity issue comes up. I'm speaking, I'm city employee, our, I'm, I want to let you know our normal procedures. The city does have some subsidy money for traffic, for neighborhood traffic calming. I'm not going to make any representative, any representation as to the financing of a traffic calming in your neighborhood because I think that's more appropriate, debated in the use agreement by higher authorities than the city engineer. I think it does need to be specifically resolved, um, how those facilities are proposed to be paid for. So that's traffic calming. Any, let's take it one at a time. Any questions on traffic calming?
Does anybody hear that? There's a question about what about a light at Craig and Orange? Is that related to traffic calming? When I speak of traffic calming, I think of neighborhood streets, the residential streets, um, minor neighborhood collectors, the Hickories and Californias, and also some of your other residential streets. Traffic signals on Russell Street, on South Third, on Orange Street are not what we'd call traffic calming. It's more of a traffic management. Okay. Um, with the Orange Street Bridge construction, part of what your tax dollars are paying for is, um, an analysis of the Orange Street Bridge and the adjacent corridors, Craig Lane and, uh, Front Street to the north and, um, you know, First to the south. All of those impacts adjacent to the Orange Street Bridge reconstruction were considered with the Montana Department of Transportation's analysis of the bridge reconstruction. It's going from two lanes to four lanes. And Craig Lane is going to be substantially reconstructed from the intersection of Orange Street down to the McCormick Park, Park entrance. I would expect Craig Lane would continue to be reconstructed from the McCormick Park entrance into any proposed Civic Stadium site. During that analysis, there was projections of traffic volumes, um, anticipating that Craig Lane would be eventually connected. Um, not as a, this was before this site was conceived for a stadium, but that this Craig Lane would be connected over to Russell Street, probably on the Dakota or Wyoming alignments. They pictured the extension of Craig Lane. And the comprehensive plan zoning was also considered. What is the maximum, what is the projected densities of development? So there was a traffic analysis done of, of, of projected future. And that analysis said that the traffic signal is not warranted at Craig Lane. So that's one issue. I'm not saying that a traffic signal will never happen at Craig Lane. I'm saying with the Orange Street Bridge reconstruction and as the project is per, uh, currently proposed, they're talking about, um, immediate, temporary traffic management at the intersection related to events. Flaggers, people signaling, stopping traffic on Orange Street to allow the Craig Street, um, egress. That's my understanding of the proposal now. Yes, ma'am?
There is not a cost estimate? Let me take a step back. Traffic calming, it's not a valium for all the drivers. It's, these are physical structures in the roadway that modify a driver's behavior. Either it reduces speed, um, allows for, um, um, discouragement of cut through traffic or it accommodates pedestrian or bicycle facilities, um, making it easier to cross a street or you might have a congestion or speed problem. So there's a whole variety of physical features that you can do. Traffic circles in an intersection of just one of many things. It's the most typical and
It's the most typical, and we've used that successfully in other areas of Missoula, you can go down to Evans Street between Arthur and Higgins and see the traffic circles. But there's other applications such as bulging out the curbs, which has been tried on a test format on Phillips Street up on the north side, and those curb bulbouts to constrict the traffic lane and to provide a shorter crossing distance for pedestrians, that's another application. To give you some order of magnitude and cost, traffic circles, depending on the landscaping, depending on if you go with ornamental concretes, those types of things, could range from five to eight thousand dollars per traffic circle per intersection. If you go to looking at each of the four quadrants of an intersection and doing bulbout, something like that, the costs are at least three times as much. You've got four locations to reconstruct instead of one central location, at the corners there's often drainage problems and things like that. So there's a range of costs that could be expected, pardon the pun, there could be, you can get the cost within a ballpark, but there is, because the types of traffic calming, exactly where they would go, the extent of them, and so there's a lot of variables that are unresolved as far as expenses of traffic calming. Yes, ma'am, in the back?
You know, when you're talking about the traffic calming, it kind of introduces those in that neighborhood between Higgins and Orange, I wondered if they have those concretes and then they took them out? Their vehicle out and then they were removed? I wonder why they're removing one of these things? And number two, does it not seem to be cool that in a busy time, that it would just seem to be a model and have to have it in those areas instead of?
Were you speaking on South Fourth Street? Is that worth it? That's an example of there was temporary facilities placed on South Fourth Street by petition from the property owners, they wanted to try out a traffic calming measure. And we tried these bulbouts at the corners, they turned out to be, in that case, more of a nuisance for the neighborhood than an enhancement to the neighborhood. And so at the neighborhood's request, a majority, we got the message that they wanted those removed, thank you very much, but they would like their neighborhood back the way it was. So that was removed. What we're saying is that, and this is a similar case, we want to, we'd want to try, and that's part, that was part of our program.
Paid for by the city?
It's paid for by the city, by the way. Paid for by the city. That was, and these types of temporary measures, certainly that's part of our routine public works programs that would be, and I don't want to say, I don't want to make any commitments, but it's part of our routine program to have these temporary measures be part of the City Public Works Department programs. That's another thing, is that we're talking about a limited amount of events, thirty or fifty events a year, something like that? We, okay, we're talking about, what I understand, is a limited amount of events. I don't expect that there's going to, and let me just speak hypothetically. If you assume a limited amount of events, do you want to have traffic calming obstructions in your roadways three hundred and sixty-five days a year if there's thirty to fifty events a year?
Excuse me, there's forty baseball games, but the extraordinary events, there's no limit right now in this use agreement.
Okay, let's assume that there's three hundred and sixty-five events a year, you'd probably want to have permanent fixtures placed in your neighborhood streets.
You can talk about that.
Yeah, excuse me, let me finish, please. Assuming that there might be some less magnitude of use, you might want to have less or portable traffic calming that could be deployed during special events, baseball games, or these extraordinary events, and then removed for, when the neighborhood, when those stadium events are not happening. That's another alternative for consideration.
Steve?
Yes.
Could I jump in with a comment?
Thank you, yes.
Something for the neighborhood to think about, too, you know, let's be smart about this and think about what's the goal? Is the goal to get as many people in and out as fast as they can so more people drive their cars? Or is the goal to make it kind of a pain in the butt for people to drive their cars to the stadium and therefore they have to walk? So you've got to think about that factor as well, and just streamlining it for automobiles may not make the most sense. So we've got to think about that.
The question is if we close off Hickory Street at South First Street during these special, or, excuse me, at River Street, isn't it? I'm sorry, I've been saying First Street when it's River, it's a River Street, not River Road, River Street. Why would we need these extraordinary traffic calming devices? I think there's a perception, what we've heard at the, at the City Public Works Department, what I've heard, is a concern about on-street parking or cut-through traffic in the neighborhoods that would not use the primary parking areas, but use on-street parking adjacent to the stadium areas.
I would go back to the.
The MCAT guys asked me to repeat everything the audience says or to hand you the mic, so if I sound like a parrot, you'll know why.
Well, and then do I have to worry about the money? So, I mean, I have to normalize?
I know how that is. I know how that is.